...for your patience, my name is Mary Dixon. I am the president of the League of Women Voters of Glendale, Burbank, and I would like to welcome you all tonight to this forum. As we begin our evening of democracy in action, let us begin with the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The League of Women Voters was started in 1920 after women won the right to vote nationally. For 45 years, membership in the League has also been open to men. Our local organization in Glendale was formed in 1940, so we are celebrating our 80th anniversary this year. We are strong supporters of the election process, and the League joins the city of Glendale in encouraging voters to not only vote themselves, but to reach out to family members and friends to encourage them to vote as well. For the March 3 election, the deadline for registering to vote or changing your registration is Tuesday, February 18. The questions you will be hearing tonight are questions that we have received from the public and our members, and we hope that the candidates will find these questions to be challenging, enabling you, the voters, to make an informed decision. Tonight's candidate forum rules to the terms of civil discourse by both candidates and the public. The hallmark of democracy is the willingness of all members of our community to treat each other with courtesy and respect, not just the people that we agree with. It is in that spirit that we are here this evening to engage in a vital part of our democratic process, a civilized discussion of the important issues that confront our community. So I want to thank all of the candidates and the audience for being here tonight. The League also thanks the city of Glendale for once again providing voters with the opportunity to view the forum, both here in person and via rebroadcast. We are particularly grateful to the assistance of the Glendale Public Information Office in conducting these forums. We have many of our League members here tonight working to make this forum happen, including our Voter Service Chair Joan Hardy and her team, which includes Monica Marquez. Our audience greeters, Elise Koffei-Yun and Joileen Wagner are the ladies who are collecting your questions. Our timekeepers, Susan Halgren and Rene Lesk, you'll see them holding the signs, and our photographer, John McPhee. And now I would like to introduce our moderator for this evening's forum, Rita Zverne. Rita is a longtime League member with much experience in moderating forums. We are grateful to Rita and the many hours that she dedicates to the League. Rita?
Good evening and welcome. This forum will be broadcast this evening and then at various times until the election date on Glendale TV 6 and the YouTube channel of the city of Glendale. No reproduction or rebroadcast of this forum may be made without the prior written permission of the League of Women Voters and the city of Glendale. No digital forms of recording are permitted in these chambers during the forum. The audience here tonight is invited to submit written questions for the candidates. Please raise your hand if you would like to ask a question, and one of the monitors will provide you with a card and pencil. Questions will be collected only during the opening statements and the first question. We would request that the audience turn off all cell phones and pagers, and that they refrain from applauding or otherwise disrupting the forum. If a candidate's supporters are disruptive during another candidate's remarks, the other candidate will be given additional time to compensate for the interruption. Additionally, attacks of a personal nature, including private matters having no bearing on a candidate's public persona or ability to perform the duties of the office in a competent, ethical manner, will not be tolerated. If a candidate makes a personal attack during his or her remarks, the time required for me to interrupt the candidate and remind him or her of the rule will be taken from their own speaking time. All qualified candidates in the Glendale City Council election were invited to participate in these evening's forums, this evening's forum. I would like to begin by introducing the candidates in ballot order. Greg Astorian, Susan Wolfson, Councilmember Paula Devine, Artie Kosakian, William Kosian, Leonard Menuchian, Dan Brotman, and Councilmember Vartan Garpetian. Each candidate will be allowed 30 seconds for an opening statement with emphasis on his or her reasons for deciding to run for election to the Glendale City Council this year. Following these statements, there will be a total of 10 questions during the forum. For the purpose of responding to the first eight questions, the candidates will be divided into groups of four. The first candidate will be given two minutes to respond to question one, followed by the responses of one minute each for candidates two, three, and four. Then candidate five will be given two minutes to respond to question two, followed by responses of one minute each for candidates six, seven, and eight, and so on for the remaining six questions. This will give each candidate the opportunity to address one question for two minutes and three questions for one minute each. Following these questions, there'll be an open round, where each candidate will have up to one minute to address any of the forum questions not previously addressed to him or her, or to expand upon a previous answer. The final question will be addressed to all of the candidates at the forum, beginning with candidate number one. Although it's not our standard process, in light of the importance of this question and to ensure that all the candidates have had sufficient time to consider their response, we have previously provided this question to all of the candidates. Each candidate will be allowed two minutes to respond to this question. Following the question period, the candidates will be given two minutes each for a closing statement. During the opening and closing statements and the question responses, our timekeepers will alert candidates to the time remaining with signs of one minute, 30 seconds, and then a stop sign when they are out of time. We will now begin with opening statements. Mr. Astorian, your opening statement, please.
Thank you. Do you hear me? So I've called Glendale home for the past 43 years. I got married to my wife Mona 30 years ago, and now we have two of our children that continue calling Glendale home. Folks, I am all about the well-being and the safety of our children and our families. My name is Greg Astorian. I'm the number one on your ballot, and I just got the endorsement of your police and fire.
Thank you. Ms. Wolfson, your opening statement, please.
Hello, Susan Wolfson. A frog jumped in my throat, but I'm gonna carry on. I'm running for city council because I want to improve the quality of our life. I'm a finance professional in municipal finance since 2014 for the city of La Canyada Flintridge. In addition, I practiced as a CPA for 28 years auditing cities and businesses. Excuse me. I'm sorry. I'll just sit down. Thank you.
Ms. Devine, your opening statement, please.
Thank you. I have been your voice on city council for the past five and a half years, and I have had the honor of being your mayor. My background is in education. I have a master's in education administration. People ask me all the time, why are you running for reelection? I tell them the same thing every time. I want the same things as you do, a safe, beautiful, and sustainable city. I ask for your opportunity to continue serving this council. Thank you.
Mr. Kosakian, your opening statement, please.
Thank you. My name is Artie Kosakian. I was born in Boston, and my family moved here 30 years ago in pursuit of the American dream. I'm a product of Glendale Public Schools. I've lived here for 30 years, and now I have the privilege of raising my son in the family, in the community that I grew up in. I'm a husband, I'm a father, I'm a college professor of government, but most importantly, like you, I'm a resident of Glendale that truly and deeply cares about the future of our city. And that is why I'm running for city council, and I'd be honored to have your vote. I look forward to our discussion tonight.
Mr. Kosian, your opening statement, please.
My name is William Kosian. I was born and raised in Glendale. I attended Glendale schools all my life and transferred from Glendale Community College to USC, where I studied urban policy and planning. Upon graduation, it hit me that I think the city council in Glendale needs a young, innovative, and someone with an educated degree to serve us and to be the voice for those who want to see better, smart change in Glendale. And I think we need a breath of fresh outsider air, and I think I will provide that for you, representing you on city council.
Thank you. Mr. Menuchian, your opening statement, please.
Good evening. My name is Leonard Menuchian. I've been lucky to live in Glendale for 34 years. I've raised a family here, and in the process, I've been lucky to serve the community in a number of different ways, whether it was a scouter, a coach, or an 11-year planning commissioner, and this is a culmination of years of service today. My name is Leonard Menuchian, and I'm number three on the ballot, or number six on the ballot on the third. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brotman, your opening statement, please.
Good evening. My name is Dan Brotman. I'm an economics professor at Glendale College. I'm also the father of two beautiful young women and a committed environmentalist. Many of you know me from my fight against the Grace and Gas Plant, in which I got the city to adopt a cleaner solution and save $174 million in the process. I intend to bring the same type of critical thinking to the other big issues facing the city: development, housing affordability, traffic, fiscal sustainability, and much more.
Thank you. Mr. Garpetian, your opening statement, please.
Is this inaudible? Yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Vartan Garpetian. I've had the honor of serving you as councilmember for five years and one year as the mayor. Tonight, I'm looking forward to discuss the important issues which affect the quality of life in Glendale. I'm proud to be endorsed by the Glendale Police Officers Association, Glendale Firefighters Association, Glendale Teachers Association, many elected officials, and local community leaders. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now begin the question period. The first question is directed to Mr. Astorian. How should the needs and desires of the business community for development be balanced against the needs for affordable housing and other community improvements? Mr. Astorian, your two-minute response, please.
So affordable housing is where the key concentration should be today, if not in the state of California and the entire city of Glendale. Right now, we have a population that is rent burdened, that is about 62% of this population. The way in which you fight affordable housing or you provide affordable housing is to provide incentives to small, local duplex, triplex, and fourplex owners to add an additional affordable housing. When you give them the incentive, then you add the condition to make sure that that unit is leased to folks with 30% off the average income in the city of Glendale. That's called affordable housing. Now, market rate housing is also important, and this council has done some inclusionary zoning adjustments, that they can have units as affordable being included in, say, 200 or 300-unit building. But the problem with a 200 or 300-unit building is that it exasperates the traffic and the concentration on one area. My plan is what works. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wolfson, your one-minute response, please.
First of all, I want to say that in order for us to provide affordable housing, it's a very important issue. It's very important that we take care to ensure that the housing that gets built is actually affordable. Much of the housing that's been built over the past years has not been affordable, and often affordable housing is destroyed and replaced with expensive housing. I also think it's very important not to sacrifice other areas, single-family residential neighborhoods. I don't see why single-family residential neighborhoods have to be eliminated or destroyed in any way in order to address the affordable housing issue. And finally, I think we should look at incentives that may be available, working on ensuring that those are being utilized by builders in providing housing that is actually going to meet the needs of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Devine, your one-minute response, please.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to repeat the question, please.
Certainly. How should the needs and desires of the business community for development be balanced against the needs for affordable housing and other community improvements? Your one-minute response, please.
Business. Should I get closer? It's scaring me. Well, we have to have a balance in our community. We need affordable housing. There's no doubt about that. We are doing our best to provide support and funding for affordable housing. We need to work with developers in our community to make sure that we have streamlined our permit process so that they are able to build affordable housing, and we have to incentivize them as well. We need, we have numbers coming down for housing, so we are going to need to work with developers and businesses in our community to make sure that that happens.
Thank you. Mr. Kosakian, your one-minute response, please.
First and foremost, I think that we need to pump the brakes on the overdevelopment of these luxury units in the downtown. And I'll tell you what isn't a way to balance those interests. It's not by building more hotels. So let's get that out of the way. But in terms of how we can balance the needs of the business development community with the needs of affordable housing, we gotta continue the public-private partnerships that we've always had. I was on the YMCA board when we built the ACE 121 Artist Colony Project right here in the downtown. We need to build more of the affordable type of housing with these partnerships, but we need to have continuous vigilant oversight over these partnerships so the city doesn't get robbed out of millions of dollars like they did with the ADI scandal. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next question is directed first to Mr. Kosian. A 25-story luxury hotel has been proposed for development next to the Hilton Hotel on Glen Oaks Boulevard. What concerns would you have, if any, about this project? Mr. Kosian, your two-minute response, please.
In terms of new hotels in Glendale, there definitely is not a need for any new hotels. A few years back, we did need new hotels. Glendale had increasing amenities. Glendale was slowly becoming a tourist attraction. We had a lot of visitors from outside visiting our community. So the three-star motels wouldn't do it. So back then, I would say I would be a proponent of hotels. At this point, I think we've done some hotel studies and business studies behind the economics of a hotel, and I think we're reaching enough number of rooms in the city, four-star, five-star rooms, that we're able to accommodate this demand. And I think building hotels would be considered overdevelopment in the hotel genre, and I think we need to put a halt to building hotels in downtown Glendale.
Thank you. Mr. Menuchian, your one-minute response, please.
Well, in my opinion, the biggest problem is that we don't have the information, the candidates don't have the information to make a final response. But I would say that putting two hotels next to each other will definitely hurt the density issues that that area, that Glen Oaks area faces as it is, and it could exacerbate the situation further in regards to other issues having to do with density. One of the things that I would also be worried about is workforce housing for the individuals that we would expect to live and work in that hotel, given that we already have an issue with affordable housing in the city of Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brotman, your one-minute response, please.
I've been canvassing all over Glendale, north and south, talking to a lot of people, and it's clear that people want a Glendale, particularly a downtown, that's for Glendaleans. They want a human Glendale. But what we're seeing is a Glendale that's a center for corporate headquarters and hotels, and I think that's wrong. I agree with Artie. We need to pump the brakes on some of these luxury developments and hotels, and we need to be focusing on building affordable housing and, where we can, additional park space, especially in South Glendale.
Thank you. Mr. Garpetian, your one-minute response, please.
Yes, thank you. That hotel was, every project that comes to Glendale, there's a stage one, stage two process. Stage one, there's no approval. You just voice your opinion about any project that comes in, and the council was their opinion about lack of parking, and there was no parking. So I personally said, if there is no parking, I'm not going to approve anything. So this hotel is not approved. As far as demand in hotel, Glendale has demands for hotel. There is no, only one five-star hotel in Glendale, which is Hilton. There are no four-star hotels in Glendale. There are 70,000 people who come to Glendale and work every day, and since I got elected, so many headquarters moved to Glendale, like Whole Foods, CBRE, Cisco, Children's Hospital, USC, Rodrigo Hills Hospital, and these businesses, they have travelers. They come in and they want to stay in hotels. They don't want to go to Pasadena. So the fact that there is no need in hotel in Glendale is not true. The reports say that as well.
Thank you. The next question is directed first to Ms. Wolfson. In January, the city of Glendale passed an ordinance restricting short-term rentals to owner-occupied residences only and banning vacation rentals entirely. Do you think this ordinance goes too far or not far enough, and why? Ms. Wolfson, your two-minute response, please.
Well, I think this ordinance is actually a good ordinance. I think you don't want to say, we're not going to have any of these short-term rentals at all, although they do eat into the housing supply, and I believe that that is a problem. However, people have a right to use their property as they wish to, and if they want to have that type of rental going on, we need to make allowances and allow them to do a bit of that. Additionally, I would want to very carefully listen to public input about how this is going for their neighborhoods and how they feel about it in adjusting or later revising, amending any ordinances of this nature, because ultimately, that is the most important factor, is how do people in the community, especially in the location where this is going on, how is it affecting them, and how do they like it? Are they pleased? Do they feel like they need more latitude? Or do they feel that it's a problem for their neighborhood? That's the acid test for any quality-of-life type of issue like this. It's definitely a quality-of-life issue, in my opinion. I think.
Thank you. Ms. Devine, your one-minute response, please.
Thank you. You know, in developing this ordinance and restricting the short-term rentals, I took three factors into account. First of all, the complaints of noise and disturbances and parking, the reduction of available affordable housing units and rental units, and also the negative impact on those property owners that use these rentals as their livelihood. And it seemed to me that the first two, the noise complaints and the reduction of available apartments and rentals, outweighed the other. So I think we came up with a fair ordinance, but I would be willing in the future to see how it's working out for everyone and if there is a possibility of making appropriate changes.
Thank you. Mr. Kosakian, your one-minute response, please.
I believe our primary responsibility as councilmembers should be to protect the integrity of our neighborhoods and their character, and certainly, no one buys a home. I know my wife and I did not buy a home expecting our next-door neighbor to start running a bed and breakfast out of it. Having said that, I believe the initial reason for addressing this issue was because of these nuisance locations that are party homes, as Councilmember Devine mentioned, places where there's a lack of parking because of this impact that it's having, and I do believe that the city had to act in order to restrict this. Now, we will wait to see whether the actions taken by the city will have the intended effects. I think that we should not have party homes, but people who do want to temporarily rent their space to either subsidize the increasing cost of unaffordability of housing or mortgages should be able to maybe rent out a room or take on a person if they happen to be on a fixed income. So we'll wait to see what the impact is and then revisit it.
Thank you. Mr. Astorian, your one-minute response, please.
I think this ordinance is the correct ordinance. It strikes the right balance, and I don't have anything further to add.
Okay. The next question is directed first to Mr. Menuchian. What plans or programs would you propose to increase affordable housing for families, employees, and students in the city of Glendale? Mr. Menuchian, your two-minute response, please.
What I've said all along during all these forums has been that we need to develop a comprehensive incentivized plan of affordable housing development. And when I say comprehensive, we have to look at the available locations where we have stock of older housing that can be taken offline and affordable housing can be placed there. The reason I insist almost on having a large development go there is because that's the only way that you can build large enough numbers of affordable housing units while working on the infrastructure around those numbers such that you don't exacerbate the other problems that we already have in the city. So that's why I've always argued for that. The second reason is, and another theme that has become clear during our forums, has been the concern that the community has regarding SB 50. Well, those cities that have incentivized plans such as this for affordable housing are exempted from SB 50, and despite the fact that it was beaten down a couple days ago, it will be back, and we can, it's not if, it's when. But if we put this plan in place, we will be exempted from the requirements of SB 50, and all our talk about litigation, et cetera, et cetera, will go away. This is the one place where good policy and good politics intersect, and we will not only help the city, it will also help our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brotman, your one-minute response, please.
We clearly have an affordable housing crisis. We've been building a lot in Glendale. There are these numbers called the RENA numbers that the state hands down, telling us what our needs are. We are in the current cycle, five years into the current cycle, we've already built 1.7 times the amount of housing we need. However, it's almost all at the high end. It's luxury. We need to build low end across the income range. The inclusionary zoning ordinance approach is just going to be a drop in the bucket. We need to lean into this problem. We have worked with affordable housing developers to build ACE 121, as already mentioned. We've also just recently bought two parcels of land. We're going to need new economic models to build this affordable housing with creative financing solutions. I think there's some ways we can do this, but we will have to lean in, and it will cost us some money.
Thank you. Mr. Garpetian, your one-minute response, please.
Thank you. I'm gonna go a little bit fast because I have a lot to say. RENA numbers are out. The state is telling us we are short 14,000 units on market rate and 8,000 in affordable housing. Council has been working. Everything that says "we did it," council has done it, not we. We purchased two large properties, spent $20 million, built over 100 affordable housing units in Glendale since 2015, allocated $5 million for 1,000 families to receive $300 subsidy program, put a halt on the development and changed the codes. 15% inclusion housing is mandatory for every development that comes to Glendale. We built units for veterans, artists, seniors, and young families, and at the end, my initiative was that we pass the right-to-lease ordinance so the prices of rents will not go up four or five times or three times a year. That is part of an affordable housing. Is it enough? No, of course, we need to do more, but...
Thank you. Mr. Kosian?
RENA numbers are there.
Mr. Kosian, your one-minute response, please.
In terms of affordable housing, I have two approaches. One, I think we keep saying incentivize and develop. I want to put a little bit of my brakes on the development part. I think we need to incentivize existing landowners in the city of Glendale. If you create a tier system where existing landowners, say, have 20 units, and you say if 15% or 20% is tier one, tier two would be, let's say, well, the other way around. So tier one would be, let's say, 40% affordable housing. Tier two would be 35%. And you come up with a plan like this where you incentivize the people who've owned apartments and currently do own apartments in the city of Glendale to actually rent out to affordable people that qualify for affordable housing, and the city creates a criteria. I think that will alleviate the problem and push stagnant renters a little bit either to newer units, which are more expensive, or buy a home. But what that will do is not overdevelop in our community, because at the end of the day, developers are seeking money, and you can't tell a developer to build a lot of affordable housing because the numbers aren't going to match up. housing because the numbers aren't going to match up. It's all the pro forma that has to work out. So I don't think by just saying, "Develop, develop, develop," incentivize is going to be the solution.
Thank you. The next question is directed first to Ms. Devine.
There's a problem with my mic.
Excuse me.
Yeah, but it's still...
No, it works.
Okay. All right. Sorry about that.
The next question is directed first to Ms. Devine. Sales taxes were raised 0.75% in 2018 to address affordable housing and street repairs, as well as improvement to fire and police services. How would you prioritize the allocation of these added resources going forward? Ms. Devine, your two-minute response, please.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank everyone that voted for Measure S because that was a guarantee that $30 million would stay in Glendale. It would not go anywhere else. The taxes that we have been paying in the past for the homeless have gone to Long Beach, have gone to LA. This money stays in Glendale. This is earmarked specifically for quality-of-life issues. And when I'm working on the budget in April, I will make sure that those are the kinds of funding projects that we work on, that we need more infrastructure work, potholes, sidewalks, crosswalks. We could use maybe another police officer. We could look for parkland. We could make more programs for kids. There are a lot of quality-of-life issues that we could address with these funds. I have to say that we, of course, of the Measure S funding, we dedicated this year the $25 million for affordable housing projects. We bought two properties, the Tobin World, and we bought the AT&amp;T. We could be looking at maybe 300 units coming up for affordable housing because of that money. And so I'm very grateful that we have it to use, but let's use it for quality-of-life issues, resources, projects that will benefit the community. And I think that's my answer.
Thank you. Mr. Kosakian, your one-minute response, please.
Thank you. One of the challenges in relying on this money is that it's based on sales tax. And when the economy is doing well, we're going to get money, and when it's not, it's going to be far less. It's primarily based on retail as well. When we see that Sears is going out of business, and in this booming economy, three of our biggest retailers nationally, Macy's, JCPenney, and Kohl's, had their worst sales quarters ever. So retail is going to be struggling. So we have to figure out if this is a sustainable amount that we can rely on. But the first thing I would do is make sure that we restore our school resource officers in all our high schools and our middle schools to make sure that our kids are safe, that we're investing in their future, because their future is Glendale's future.
Thank you. Mr. Astori, and your one-minute response, please.
Affordable housing cannot exasperate an area. Measure S monies were supposed to be for quality-of-life issues. Folks, two miles a year is what we do as far as road repairs is concerned. We have 350 miles of roads. Now, you all, you look very young to me. I can't stay 150 years around to see whether or not these roads are going to be built. This is the kind of stuff you spend that money on, not ice skating rinks.
Thank you. Ms. Wolfson, your one-minute response, please.
I would advocate for this money to be expended on permanent improvements that will improve our quality of life, whether that be acquiring additional space for a park in South Glendale or other permanent improvements. I want to just mention as an aside that I believe that gas tax money can also be used for road resurfacing needs, so I would hope that we're doing that when we create our budget. Additionally, I would want it to be, like I said, on permanent rather than temporary things. It's very important that Glendale have lasting improvements to its quality of life from the Measure S money. And of course, it is cyclical with the sales tax cycle, and we do need to be mindful of that and use it while we have it to acquire permanent things that will improve our life. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is directed first to Mr. Brotman. What steps, if any, would you propose that the city of Glendale take to reduce its carbon footprint? Mr. Brotman, your two-minute response.
Wow.
Good question. Wow. Well, we have two issues when it comes to climate change. We do have to reduce our carbon footprint, even though Glendale is really a drop in the bucket when it comes to world carbon emissions. Every city, everywhere, every person needs to do their part. There are three major contributors to carbon emissions. One is our energy system, and we're making good progress there. A larger contributor is our transportation system. We need to invest in alternative methods of transportation. We've been building our cities all through Southern California around cars. Cars give us freedom, but cars can also become a prosthetic device that we can't live without. So we need to start thinking about what are called complete streets, space for transit, for biking, and for walking. And also, we're moving towards a ride-sharing world. So we need to think about our curb space and how we handle deliveries and ride-sharing. So transportation is key. We also need to work on buildings. Buildings use a lot of carbon or emit a lot of carbon, and we have new ways of building buildings that could be much more energy-efficient, first of all. And second of all, we need to convert buildings as much as possible to electric, because as our electric system becomes clean, then the buildings can be clean. So those are the three big things we need to do. I have a little time left, so I want to mention that from a local perspective, it's not just about reducing carbon emissions, it's about preparing for this hotter and drier and more fire-prone world that we're facing. There's a lot that we need to do, including working on making sure that we can address the urban heat island effect by using, you know, surfacing on our roads that keeps them cooler. We also need to think about fire preparedness. We should be doing a lot more of working on CERT programs, emergency response-type programs, in different communities. And we should be hardening our electric grid.
Thank you.
There's a lot more, but that's all I can say now.
Mr. Garpetian, your one-minute response, please.
Yes, thank you. I think Glendale is doing a lot as we speak. Our renewable energy is about 45%. 45% of power is renewable energy. We changed, excuse me, Mr. Brotman, we changed Grayson's plan to have more renewable, more storage, less pollution. We purchased our first electric bus. We participated in Elon One, which is 12 and a half percent of that project, which is 25 megawatt of power. Purchased five buses, which is almost zero emission. But remember, we are, geographically, we are surrounded by freeways, 2, 134, 5, 210. And nobody talks about the wear and tear on the roads, wear and tear on the tires, wear and tear on the brakes, and wear and tear on all the pollutions that comes out that affects Glendale. Am I done? No? Okay. So we are doing the best that we can, and we're going to continue doing the best that we can. We have our sustainability office right now. We hired an officer to implement that plan.
Thank you.
And Glendale is a great place and doing a great job.
Mr. Kishishin, your one-minute response, please.
Whether we like it or not, there has been a lot of specifically luxury development in downtown Glendale. What this does is incentivizes people to move to downtown Glendale, whether we like it or not. But people who can afford it like to move in. Now, what we need to do to increase mobility in the city of Glendale and get people out of their cars is create better transit systems. So what we need is something that someone who lives in downtown Glendale, an already dense area with markets, amenities, whatever the people that live there need, all we need to do is accompany them with better, so we need bike paths. I think that's very important. If you live in downtown Glendale, you could basically live your life on a bike, because you can go to the local store. If you live in the La Crescent area of Glendale, northern Glendale, I don't think we're ready for that yet. And I think we need to improve on more bike paths. We need to improve walkability with wider sidewalks, more lit sidewalks, and we need more eyes on the road. We have the amenities in place, but we don't have the modes of transportation for us to use our feet, or animals to use our paws, and for us to ride our bikes.
Thank you. Mr. Menuchian, your one-minute response, please.
I think the lowest-hanging fruit in this area is to reduce the carbon footprint that energy consumption bears on the city by encouraging property owners to build completely electric buildings for property owners, especially commercial real estate owners, to employ more solar paneling on their roofs and so on. Because as much as we want to get people out of their cars, reality has to be observed, and we have to admit that we have softer targets like buildings and the carbon footprints that they create. And that would be my first approach, and thank you.
Thank you. The next question will be directed first to Mr. Kosakian. One of our young audience members wants to know what city council can do to attract a wide variety of quality jobs with benefits so our residents don't have long commutes. Mr. Kosakian, your two-minute response, please.
Well, as I mentioned earlier, we have to really focus on what the future of Glendale's economy is going to be. For various times, Glendale has focused on one sector, and most recently, that sector has been retail. And as I mentioned earlier, with the closing of Sears, and I think that's a harbinger of things that are yet to come, we need to focus on what the next area is. We live in a very important, special place here in Southern California, where we have Jet Propulsion Laboratory to the north of us, we have Caltech to the east of us, we have amazing academic institutions unparalleled, including Clark Magnet High School and our Glendale Community College, and we have three major hospitals. We need to focus on biotech. We need to focus on the tech sector. I'm very excited that Zarya Sinanian introduced the Tech Week, but we need to build upon that, because the tech jobs are really the jobs of the future. And, you know, if you want to talk about jobs for the youth, I can tell you that the younger generation is far more adept at using technology than I am. I believe that that is one area. The other thing I would suggest is creating a pipeline between Glendale Community College and other companies in the area, so they can have apprenticeships in their second year of community college, and they're ready for the workforce when they come out. And the first place I'd start that is at the city. I know this because in my own department as city clerk, I've had a number of individuals who have gone to school at Glendale College and then continued on to get their bachelor's degrees while working at the city and gaining valuable experience. In today's job market, that experience is absolutely critical. When you go to apply for a job, your employer wants to know what you have done. So I would make sure that we create that pipeline and work with our local academic institutions and the other resources that we have to make it happen for our youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Astori, and your one-minute response, please.
And so, light manufacturing is very important. We lost 645,000 jobs to China in the past 10 or so many years. Light manufacturing is important. It's high-paying. So is technology. And by the way, let me just add to this, that I serve in the Verdugo Workforce Board, and our unemployment right now in the city of Glendale is about 3.5%, just shy of 3.5%. And we just had a $5 million grant to help folks that were being laid off from the entertainment industry. Let's not forget the entertainment industry. That's where the money is. That's where Glendale and Burbank people were making a lot of money. Those are the kinds of jobs that you have to look forward to.
Thank you. Ms. Wolfson, your one-minute response, please.
Yes, I want to say, first of all, I just returned from a conference of municipal finance officers in California, and the keynote address was from an economist, and he said that in California, we need workers more than we need jobs. It was just alluded, our unemployment rate is actually quite low right now. So I just want to mention that in passing, that the job market is actually quite robust at this time in California. Having said that, I agree with what has been previously said. I think technology jobs are very important. I think internships, as was mentioned, are a fabulous way for young people to get experience while they're still in school, that they can put on their resume, which will help them make that leap into that first-paying job that they need so badly. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Devine, your one-minute response, please.
Thank you. Well, I don't know how many people in this city realize that we are becoming a tech cluster, and that's going to bring jobs, jobs, jobs to our city. We received a $1 million grant from Senator Portentino to begin an incubator. And so we will be interviewing startups, actually, I think it's five of them, and they will be mentored through the year so that they can bring their ideas to fruition. So technology is really the way this city is building jobs. We have, if you don't know, two local gentlemen that are now billionaires because of an idea that they had, that they made an app, and now they're billionaires, service titan. So that's our future. That's the future of Glendale and our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will be directed first to Mr. Garpetian. Several audience members asked about how city leadership can do more to make sure that residents are heard and connected to the city, especially in connection with policy. What would you do to improve communication with residents? Mr. Garpetian, your two-minute response, please.
Yes, thank you. This is a million-dollar question. It's a challenging question. We've had meetings that we set for important issues like rent control issue, that we brought our planning department, we brought our zoning department, we brought our housing department, and that was advertised everywhere through adult health care centers, the senior centers, the buildings that all the seniors occupy. And we had it on our website, we had it in newspapers. You know how many people showed up from the tenant side? One. I have the pictures of it. So there are many things that we need to do, more communications, but our resources are websites, our flyers that we put in different schools. If it's a school-related, we can work with our school district and advertise more. The technology is very important that we use today, and the emails that goes out to all the people who are registered to receive emails from the city. But sometimes, unfortunately, some of the members of community do not get involved unless it hits their interest, unless it hits their pocket, and that's when they get involved. That's what you have, you have a lot of people showing up. But look at our council meetings. Everything we do is advertised three days before the council hearing. How many people show up to speak on oral communication? Come and speak on different issues. We ask so many times, please participate, please show up, please be involved. It's our goal to be involved. I meet with people every day. I had an open-door policy. Every Tuesday, I meet with people. I met with thousands of people during the last five years, and I listened to them, I heard what they were saying, and voted accordingly and implemented to every decision that I made. But we need some more cooperation. People are busy. They go to work from eight...
Thank you.
...to five, and it's very difficult.
Mr. Kishishin, your one-minute response, please.
I am 98% confident I have the answer to this problem. This is what you need. Bill Gates spends 30 minutes a year answering questions on Reddit, and he uses the computer and the internet. And he answers questions that, if he gave three-day-in-advance notices that you could come at this time to City Hall, find parking, and voice your concern, he would probably answer two of them. So what the City Hall needs is an online portal, because whether you like it or not, it's inevitable. People behind the computer on a keyboard are louder, they're more opinionated, and they're willing to talk. People don't want to come on a camera when there's five intimidating council members staring them down. And talk, that's not what people want. People want an online portal where you could go on. We barely have time to put guests. Who has time to go to a city council meeting and talk? But people will go online while they're watching TV, put a question, peruse through the website, peruse through our policies, and voice their concerns and opinions. So what I think we need is a basic online portal, and if I get elected, I will pay out of my pocket to get that developed for us.
Thank you. Mr. Menuchian, your one-minute response, please.
From the first day that I started this campaign, I have committed to including and bringing in sectors of the community that are not represented adequately on our boards and commissions. That's the first place where we speak to each other and speak about the issues and speak to our leaders of the community. Women are underrepresented on the boards and commissions to a tune of 27%. Renters are completely underrepresented. And I would like to point out the fact that most of the times for the hearings are not adequate for people who work for a living. And as far as the city council meetings are concerned, when your open mic is towards the end of the meeting, well, people can't always stay because they have to be at work tomorrow. So that has to change. And we did that when I was a planning commissioner by bringing the open-mic sector...
Thank you. Mr. Brotman, your one-minute response.
The community members don't get involved because they don't trust that the city's listening, and the divide...
I said, yeah, community members don't get involved and don't come to meetings I said, yeah, community members don't get involved and don't come to meetings because they don't trust that the city is going to listen to them. I have personal experience with this. When I raised the issue about the Grayson Gas Plant, I was treated as an obstacle. I was treated as something to be controlled and managed, not as a resource. We need to treat the community as a resource. We need, when we do surveys, to do real surveys and do something with them. When we have community meetings, we need to take that information and do something with them. This is not just about spin, but spin is basically what I've experienced when working with the city.
Thank you. We will now have an open round where each candidate can take up to one minute to address any of the forum questions not previously addressed to him or her, or to expand upon an earlier response. Mr. Astorian, your one-minute response, please.
And so, my response is in regards to the assertions that my friend Dan Brodmann has brought up in regards to $170 million savings. It really is not. The bond part of this portfolio of Grayson is about 281 million. The DER part, Demand Energy Response, is 145 million. The site preparation is about 50 million. That adds up to about $476 million. The original plan, which was the all gas, is about 500 million. Still, $25 million savings, that's wonderful, but that's a long way to 170 millions. I just wanted to do the math right. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wolfson, your one-minute response, please.
I want to address two things, so I'm going to use 30 seconds for each. First of all, with respect to the tall buildings, I want to say that we need a complete city-wide traffic circulation study. The last time we had one, we had 139,000 residents and we now have 200,000 residents. And we need traffic amelioration measures to be put into effect before we continue with this patchwork, put it here, put it there. Second thing I want to bring up is that I have a master's degree in environmental health, so I believe I'm qualified to consider these issues in great depth. In addition, I have a 35-year history of sustainable living as a person. I want realistic environmental solutions that people are going to sign on and be on board with. For starters, we can increase the B-lines, frequency of travel, so that people could actually use it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Devine, your one-minute response, please.
Thank you. First, I want to comment on the hotels. And I just want to say that we have asked for a study to be done as soon as possible on the need for more hotels in our community. And I'm talking about the number of units, the type of, type of hotel, et cetera. Let's look at it before we start adding on to, to the hotels that we have already. So that's in the works. I wanted to talk, just mention that we will be getting a traffic study. It's on the, it's going, coming on the budget in March, it will be, I'm sorry, April, it will be a full-city study. So that is on the, on the horizon. And the other thing I wanted to mention is being, how to get involved with the community and speak to the community. I have a reputation, I believe, that I answer my emails, I talk to all of you, I listen to all of you. I am always impressed when you come to city council because you are prepared, you know what you're talking about.
Thank you. Mr. Kasakian, your one-minute response, please.
Thank you. There's a lot to cover, but going back to the measureless funding, I do have to say that I absolutely agree that having a ice rink for just a short period of time was a tremendous waste of city resources. And the justification that was given at city council was that we were bringing joy to one of the most park-poor areas of the city, to a part that is very dense and where people need it. By the way, at the cost of about $40 a person if you wanted to use the ice rink, right? Not even some sort of discount for people who lived in the parts that it was trying to serve and provide joy for. So I thought that was slightly hypocritical. In terms of getting people more involved, I think people will be more involved when it's easier to run for city council. And that'll happen when we have this city broken up into districts with local representation, publicly-funded campaign with a combined at-large system. Five council districts, two at-large council seats, everyone will be represented, everyone will want to run for office.
Thank you. Mr. Kishishin, your one-minute response, please.
I want to emphasize on the civic advancement aspect in our city. So just a quick story, I adopted, if you read my name, William Kishishin, I've adopted four sites on the Glendale Two Freeway. And the reason of this was because I didn't like the trash on the side of the roads. And you guys won't believe the overwhelming amount of support. If I'm not employing homeless people, the people helping me on the freeways are high school students that genuinely want, care for their community and want to do something good, but they don't have an opportunity. I have a list of people who want to clean the freeways. Can you imagine if we had meaningful inlets to the city, meaningful opportunities for high school students, 16 to 18 years old, or even young adults, all the way up to 24, 25 years old, to get involved in the city? How much we could encourage Glendale residents to actually have a voice in our community and actually give them a doorway into voicing their opinions and not just electing one representative and hoping that they do something? So I think that we really need to create opportunities for every resident, whether it's people cleaning, I mean, you guys, people call me to help me clean trash on the freeways. And I'm sitting there basking in glory because my name's on the signs, but I don't like that. But I think everyone like me, I'm nothing special.
Thank you.
I think we need opportunities like that.
Mr. Manukian, your one-minute response, please.
What I'm hearing from the panel is a complete oversteering towards tech as the future of the city of Glendale. I understand, tech can be a very important sector of our economy, but at the end of the day, retail is also very important. Sure, we have a number of overexposed, under-quality retailers that are going out of business, but at the end of the day, if we are able to support small business in our city so that our community members can take a chance and bring out things that are not necessarily found every day, specialty, high quality and so forth, I think that would be the best way of moving forward in a very special way without necessarily giving, oversteering towards tech. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brodmann, your one-minute response, please.
Thank you. I have to respond to my friend Greg over there. I don't need to do the math because GWP says it right in their Integrated Resource Plan. They say that they're saving $174 million relative to the all gas project. We're going to be putting out a video soon, we'll reference the site on the Integrated Resource Plan, you can look at it yourself. One thing important in elections is looking where the money is coming from. I have raised more small-dollar donations than all the other candidates on this panel combined. I do not take money from any property developer and many of the other candidates do. I also do not seek the endorsements of the city unions. Not that I am, I'm a union member myself. I believe in unions and I really believe in the city staff that we have. I don't take endorsements from the unions because I'm going to be in meetings where I'm negotiating with the unions. It is not proper for a council member to be elected into office on the back of organizations that he or she is going to be negotiating with, whether that's developers or unions.
Thank you.
I'm self-funding my campaign, by the way.
Thank you. Mr. Garpetian, your one-minute response, please.
Well, I got to tell you, downtown-specific plan, there's so much talk about downtown-specific plan. It was approved in 2005 or '06. All these projects that's going up, all these tall buildings, I was not on the council when it was approved. Let me, let me just make, put that out there first. Traffic study is being done, it's being done, it's continuously being done. We have hotspots, there are intersections that we identify and we improve them. The ridership on our bus, our public transportation is low. We increased the areas that we needed to increase, the ridership is higher, we increased, that's why we purchased five more buses. We need, keep talking about bringing businesses in, bringing jobs in for our, for our community, for our kids. When you bring all these new jobs in, you need to provide housing for them. The traffic will increase, the services that we have to provide will increase. The housing that has to be provided will increase, include more development. On one hand, we don't want any development, we don't want anything, no affordable housing, no affordable housing part of the thing as well.
Thank you.
But you need to understand what, what does it take to put all this together? It's not just all this pie in the sky. Thank you.
The final question is addressed to all of the candidates. The Schools and Communities First Initiative has qualified to be placed on the November ballot. If passed, it will create a split tax rule and require all commercial and industrial properties to be assessed at fair-market value. It will thus reclaim approximately $11 billion every year, roughly half allocated for K-12 schools and community colleges, and the remaining allocated to counties and cities according to current property tax guidelines. How would you propose that the city of Glendale allocate this significant financial windfall in the event the voters pass this initiative? Please be specific. Mr. Astorian, your two-minute response, please.
And so, while I believe the intentions behind what is being proposed is noble, I do not believe that the consequences have been thought through. We got to be able to see beyond the bend in the road, folks. This is nothing but the old camel's nose, the proverb in the tent. Because if they, today, if they do it to the industrial and the commercial, what guarantee do we have that tomorrow is not going to be the multifamily and/or your homes, as single-family homes? This attack on Prop 13 is, should not be allowed, basically. In Glendale, whenever, I mean, this is a, 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 a way of Sacramento, again, enforcing their will on our municipality. In City of Glendale, whenever we've had issues and whenever we've needed money, as far as the bonds for GCC and the GUSD, we funded it. This should be left up to the municipalities, not Sacramento.
Thank you. Ms., please. Ms. Wolfson, your two-minute response, please.
Well, first of all, I want to say that this is a very questionable proposition. First of all, there is no assurance that it will pass. And second of all, I think it's an attack on the stability that we have in terms of that people rely on the stability of their tax system. And I think it will hit a lot of, it will hit a lot of sectors in a negative way if it happens. Having said that, if it were to happen, my first priorities would be to acquire property to create more park and open space in areas of the city that don't have adequate park and open space, such as South Glendale. For example, someone alluded to the Sears going out of business. Perhaps that would make a nice location for a park. I would like to spend it if it were to happen, and again, I'm not saying that I think it's necessarily the best way for us to raise money, but if it were to happen, that's the question you asked. These are the things that I would hope for. I would hope for permanent improvements to the quality of life of all Glendale residents, especially those that are underserved at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Devine, your two-minute response, please.
Thank you, thank you. Being a former teacher, I can say without hesitation that I would support the concept of this, this initiative, but I do have concerns, as does my, my fellow candidate. I'm concerned about the impact that this has on small businesses. The proponents of the initiative realize that the, the original was too draconian and it probably would not pass, so they have revised it. The question is, are they going to get the signatures in time for this to reach the ballot? Our own Glendale Unified School District has not come out in favor of it as of today. The question is, so, you know, I'm waiting to make a decision on whether I'm supporting this or not. I'm just happy it's not repealing Prop 13 because that I would definitely be against. I agree, I think that if we had this money, what a windfall it would be for this city. We could do projects that we could not do before. You know, we were still thinking about Space 134, the freeway, the cap over the freeway. Wouldn't that be a great way to use this funding to get a head start on that beautiful park that would connect north, south, east and west with a huge park between Brandon Central over the freeway? We've talked about that, we've had discussions, we have plans. Of course, and any other projects that would benefit our city, of course, we would use the money for quality of life issues, more affordable housing. We just don't have the funding right now for any more affordable housing. We're going to build the two, two developments that we have planned and this would be, as I say, a, a great start for more affordable housing. So those are the ways that I would use the funding because I think we have, it's a windfall...
Thank you. You're welcome. Mr. Kasakian, your two-minute response.
Thank you. So this is based on a complete hypothetical if it passes? And in that regard, you know, I'm happy to spend hypothetical money in a myriad of ways to pander to anyone and say, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. But let's be realistic here. All right, first of all, it's not Sacramento's will being imposed upon us because it's a ballot initiative. And by definition, that means it will be the people's will if in this hypothetical situation it passes. So let's separate Sacramento's trying to impose its values with Senate Bill 50 or AB 68 with a ballot initiative that you, me, the people of California will get to vote on. So ultimately, one of the things, if we are in this hypothetical world, that we need to do right away is spend money, we have to first of all, talk to the schools and see what their needs are. They obviously need a new headquarters, we know that, council knows that. But ultimately, we have to work on our kids. And I mentioned earlier about the school resource officers. I'm a product of Glendale Public Schools. We had a police officer on campus and we knew we had someone we could go to if we saw something, if we knew something was going to happen. We live in a much more dangerous world today. I fear for my child. Every day I drop him off at preschool, there's a part of me that suffers from anxiety because of the news that I hear of what's happening around the rest of the country. And in addition to that, we need to invest in mental health resources. We have an opioid crisis and it's hitting our children. It is hitting children all over the city. Doesn't matter if you live above the freeway or below the freeway, or you live in the east or the west or the south or the north. Our kids need our help. They need counselors, they need trained professionals to help them with the challenges and anxieties that they have so we can have a healthier city. That's where that money should be spent. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kishishin, your two-minute response, please.
I'm a businessman myself. I own three successful businesses in the city of Glendale. And I would never think, I would say this before reading a little bit about this ballot initiative, but I think a good businessman will always find a good way to make money and that we should have this tax. I'm a product of Crescent Valley High School, class of 2014. I went to Valley View Elementary School and Rosemont Middle School. Our schools look good, the gates are painted when you look from outside. But a school is not just a place and walls. A school is a place where you, kids go spend six to eight hours a day, especially high school, and they have to make a decision at 18-years-old what university they're going to go to, what major they're going to study and what they want to do in their life. And 18-year-olds don't have an opportunity to get hands-on in life, especially in the city of Glendale. I think in a city with resources like this and getting this, if this initiative passes, again, this is my opinion, if it passes, it's a ballot initiative, but I really want to take this time and emphasize the importance of our schools and getting our, having good schools, quality schools, where students aren't just memorizing textbooks to take exams, aren't going to school because mom and dad said so, but are going to school to build a meaningful career like me. I wanted to be a businessman, but I never knew what businessman. If, I was very lucky, I had people give me hands-up and give me opportunities. But a lot of students, a lot of my fellow peers, don't have that opportunity and they haven't been given that opportunity while they've been in high school. There are no more trade classes left, there's no more opportunities to actually pick what career you want to do. But at 18-years-old, you have to put your hand on a college somewhere across the nation and say, hey, I'm going to be this and do that. 18-year-olds aren't qualified to make that decision. And with more funding for our schools, I think we could have more activities, even if it's a field trip, a field trip for kindergarteners, whatever it may be. More exposure will lead to better decisions and will lead to better futures. And at the end of the day, I think the government is there to facilitate a better future for its residents. So I think if this initiative passes, the funding will definitely be used very wisely and is highly needed in our schools.
Thank you. Mr. Manukian, your two-minute response, please.
I am absolutely in favor of this ballot initiative and I do not fall for the slippery slope argument that if they do this and next thing is they're going to come and take away the, you know, Prop 13 altogether. No. We're smart enough to know the difference between something that can be used to help our schools, to put back programs that have been taken away, whether they be, in my days, and some of you may remember, we had welding, we had woodshop, we had different programs that over the years have been taken away. And we have a bunch of kids tied to devices without any idea of their full potential being realized. These, this is not a windfall, this is our money, that we can invest in our, in our own kids. So why don't we do that? Why don't we vote for this, make it happen and ask for accountability from all levels of our government, the college board as well as the GUSD who will be dealing with that? And during the forums, we've also been talking about our college students being hungry and living in their cars and whatnot. What a wonderful opportunity to reverse that trend. Again, this is not... Again, this is not a windfall, this is our money. The ballot initiative protects small business. It makes sure that it limits itself by its own very language. And ultimately, it reverses the ills of Prop 13, which was the transfer of wealth from the future to the past. So, I'm for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brotman, your two-minute response, please.
Yes, I agree with my friend Leonard here. There's a lot of misinformation.
Yeah, move, move the microphone closer, too.
Can you hear me now?
The mic is on.
On.
It is on. It's on. Okay. Okay, can I start over?
Yes.
Okay, I agree with my friend Leonard here. There's a lot of misinformation and misunderstanding about this proposition. It does not increase taxes on any residential property, single-family or multifamily. It exempts small businesses. Any business with property valued at $3 million or less is exempted. And there are many other exemptions. It is going after large corporations. For instance, Chevron, Disneyland. They are paying property taxes based on 1970s values, okay? Prop 13 was meant to keep us in our homes as property prices went up. It was not meant to give a competitive advantage to certain corporations. So, I am all for this. And I agree, this slippery slope camel in the tent idea, you know, you could say that about anything. And that's what the opponents are gonna be using to try to misinform and scare people so that they vote against this. Now, having said that, if we're talking about this great windfall, well, we have a lot of blackouts in this city. We need to upgrade our distribution grid. Lot of potholes and broken streets that I think could, could use some work. Parks, fire remediation. We need more cops on the street. We've got an epidemic of pedestrian accidents because of speeding drivers. More cops to enforce speed limits. Also, more traffic calming technology that can get out in there where the, where the cops can't be. Boy, there's a lot. But affordable housing, of course. And we hardly talked or didn't talk at all about homelessness. We need some money for more supportive and transitional housing to keep people from falling into homelessness or keep people that are situationally homeless, get them back into housing, right? And we also could use more money for some of the great organizations that we work with, like Ascensia and Family Promise of the Verdugos, who do really good work on homelessness. So, there's a laundry list, lot of things we can do. Let's get the thing passed first.
Thank you. Mr. Garpetian, your two-minute response.
Would you repeat the question, please?
Oh, sorry. Okay, the Schools and Communities First Initiative has qualified to be placed on the November ballot. If passed, it will create a split tax roll and require all commercial and industrial properties to be assessed at fair market value. It will thus reclaim approximately $11 billion every year, roughly half allocated for K-12, K-12 schools and community colleges, and the remaining allocated to counties and cities according to their current property tax guidelines. How would you propose that the City of Glendale allocate this significant financial windfall in the event the voters pass this initiative? And please be specific. Your two-minute response, please.
Thank you, thank you. First of all, I want to make a few clarifications. That Glendale schools have a high quality, we have high-quality schools in Glendale. And Glendale is the fourth safest city in California, sixth in the nation. We have 10,000 businesses in Glendale, they're mom-and-pop businesses. There are, there are 90% of the employers in this city. They employ 90% of the, of the workforce. The blackouts that I mentioned, yes, we do have some, but compared to our neighboring cities, it's almost zero. Most of it is because of the miler balloons, that they go and hit the, hit the transformers and have issues. Glendale's traffic is being criticized all the time and the drivers and the accidents. We are, there was a survey done, not by City of Glendale, we are number six in 50 cities, six, one being best. And you may not agree with it, but we have it on our website, you can take a look at it. Also, the, this proposition, look, California, I have the numbers here, if I may. California is 43rd in per population funding, 43rd out of 50 states. $8,500 per student versus $12,000. So, it's a, it's a huge difference. How are we gonna get there? This proposition and the formula on a tax basis, whatever property taxes we collect, it goes to state, they return to us 10%. If this is gonna be like gas tax that they wanted to take away because they, we are not going to meet our RIN numbers, it will be an issue. If this is like Measure HH homeless initiative that we pay $10 million and we received only $317,000, it would be an issue. Also, there is a loophole that they can close. Most of these corporations, it changes hand, they sell the corporations, but they, the ownership stays the same, the corporation stays the same. They purchase corporations, so the ownership on the title doesn't change. So, that's why the taxes don't go up. They have to close the loopholes.
Thank you. The candidates will now have two minutes each for their closing statements. Mr. Historian, your two-minute response, please.
Thank you. I think I enjoyed myself thoroughly. Thank you to the League of Women Voters. I think you're doing an excellent job. Two questions keep consistently coming up on the campaign trail. What is it that you've done? What's your record in your community involvement? And what are you gonna be doing about homelessness, environmental issues, traffic, and what have you? Well, here's my answer. I've been involved with the Salvation Army for 10 years. I serve as a volunteer there, as their vice president. And we operate a homeless shelter. So, I do have an understanding what it takes for solutions for the homelessness. I also have volunteered as a board, as a director, from its inception in the Cal, in the Glendale Fire Foundation. Now, that has given me a unique perspective about public safety. That is very important to me and I think that's one of the parts that has helped me to understand what has been going on. Besides, over 43 years, I've talked to people like you, listened to people like you, and I've learned from people like you. Look, it will be a privilege, it will be an absolute privilege to serve you, as when the microphone comes on. But other than that, it will be a privilege to serve you as a council member. And I'm number one on the ballot and I humbly ask for your vote.
Thank you. Ms. Wolfson, your two-minute closing statement, please.
Okay, thank you, first of all, to the League of Women Voters, Glendale Burbank, for putting on this excellent forum. I found the questions challenging and really enjoyed hearing what audience members were thinking, as well as the league question. I'm a municipal finance professional, as I mentioned earlier, and that is something very important, I believe. For our city's future sustainability, to ensure that we can retain the quality of life and in fact improve upon it, we have to be careful about how we spend our money. And that's something unique and special that I bring to the table. I will be your 2020 watchdog over the city finances. Additionally, as I mentioned earlier, I have a great interest and concern about environmental issues and I believe I'm uniquely qualified to judge solutions that are offered to us to improve how we do and to make our city more green. And finally, I want to mention also that I've served as a Glendale Parks and Recreation Commissioner since 2017, a service that I've been very happy to perform for all of the residents of Glendale and have done my utmost to ensure that these resources are available for everyone in the city. My name again is Susan Wolfson. With me on council, the sixth council member will be you, the residents of Glendale. And I thank you for your attention and for your confidence.
Thank you. Ms. Devine, your two-minute closing statement, please.
Thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters, appreciate this event. My belief is that the role of government is to improve the lives of people. And to accomplish that, my job as a council member is to ensure that the city runs efficiently, that your quality of life is good, and that you receive the services that you deserve. Tonight, you've heard ideas from various candidates and what they will do if elected. I too have ideas and priorities. However, in addition to that, I have a track record that shows what I have done during my tenure on council. My track record proves that I have been listening to the voices, listening to all of you on various issues. Your input is very important to me and forms the basis of all of my decisions. Just a few examples. I have voted no on all utility rate increases since coming to council. I added a condition to, in the Revised Grayson Repowering Plan, which set a path for 100% renewable energy by 2030. I introduced and voted yes on a demolition deterrence ordinance that discourages the demolition, illegal demolition, of our historic buildings. We have a safe, beautiful, and vibrant city. And I am proud of the progress and accomplishments that council has achieved in the past five years. However, I look forward to building on that progress and moving us into the future. My priorities for this, for this campaign, this follow, next four years, the environment, affordable housing, traffic congestion and safety, protection of our residential neighborhoods and our historic resources, fiscal sustainability. Please go to my website, vote devine2020.com. I am proven, trusted, and experienced. Please, I ask for an opportunity to continue to represent you on council. Make your vote divine.
Thank you. Mr. Kosakian, your two-minute closing statement, please.
Thank you. Thank you. Fellow residents, I thank you for taking the time to come out here and listen to us on the issues that matter the most to you. Now, we have a lot of great dedicated people up here with a lot of great ideas. And fortunately, you have three votes. So, I'm hoping to earn one of your three votes this March. Glendale has many challenges, but I've always said that there's nothing wrong with Glendale that can't be fixed with what's right with Glendale. And that is the people, us, you, that have chosen to make this our home. Now, it doesn't matter where you came from, whether you were born in Glendale or chose to make this your home, whether you own a house or you rent an apartment. Every one of us calls this our home now and it's up to us to make sure that its future is bright. Like you, I've watched our city grow and change and the impact it has had on our quality of life. I've witnessed what Glendale was, I see what it is today, and I see what it is becoming. But most importantly, I know what it can be if we all work together. We must secure a brighter future for the next generation and that will happen only when we work together. If you trust me with one of your votes, I will make sure that our council focuses on preserving our cultural and historical heritage against Sacramento's disastrous policies, addressing traffic congestion and mobility issues, protecting our neighborhoods and making sure city's safety and security are a top priority, building climate change resiliency practices across all city services, increasing affordable housing for seniors and low-income residents, and promoting the arts and celebrating our cultural diversity throughout all city programs. And most importantly, advocating for districted elections and publicly-funded campaigns. Given my breadth of experience, I know our city's strengths. And I also know where it needs improvement. I'm ready to roll up my sleeves for common sense solutions. I'm proud to be endorsed by the Sierra Club, the Glendale Teachers Association, Senator Anthony Portantino, Adam Schiff, Jackie Speer, and former Mayor Carl Rajio, along with Supervisor Antonovich. On March 3rd, you have an opportunity to elect the voice for change to the city council. Vote Arti Kosakian. Thank you very much.
Mr. Kosishian, your two-minute closing statement, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, once again, my name is William Kosishian. I'm born and raised in Los Angeles, I graduated in Glendale specifically. I graduated from University of Southern California. I have a degree in planning and urban policy. I think what we all could agree on is that city, we needed someone on city council that has a little bit more of an educated background in cities, how they work. Unless they've been around for 250 years and have seen how cities develop, fail, grow, sprawl, I think education is really important. I think I've learned that at the University of Southern California. I've been able to build on that fundamental framework as a resident of the City of Glendale. I've seen what it actually takes, real-life experiences of being a resident and the challenges you guys have. As a businessperson, I've spent many 7:00 a.m.'s at City Hall in the permits office. I've spent a lot of time on the phone with inspectors and all over, so I know what businesspeople have to go through. As a civic leader in Glendale, I started my nonprofit organization last year. It's called the Dream Alive Foundation, which serves at-risk youth and creates camps and involvement opportunities for youth. And I've basically talked to a lot of people, I've talked to a lot of residents, I've heard many concerns. Again, I don't think any one of us here, we are sitting away from you guys, we seem to have wider space, but we're, nobody here is special. We all want to do what we want to do to help. But consider that, your next city councilman needs to be experienced, have a background, education in cities and how they work. And also be, having been a business owner, I know what you business owners face. So, I want to represent you guys, I want to be the voice for you, for your neighbors. My name is William Kosishian and I hope to get your vote on March 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Menukian, your two-minute closing statement, please.
Thank you very much. I want to first thank the League for, for this wonderful opportunity. As I told earlier, as I told you earlier, I've lived in this city for 34 years and I've raised a family here. And I've served the community consistently since then and that has given me the opportunity to discern the problems that we have in this city. Now, if you think about the problems that we have been talking about all night, you will see that none of them jumped at us out of nowhere. These are problems that have been built over years. Meanwhile, and I don't mean this as any disrespect, but we have a current city council that has had a five-year term. Now, despite that, we are still having these problems. So, again, although I respect the service that they have given, the question becomes, how do we solve these problems? Do we keep going the same, down the same road expecting different results? Isn't that sort of like the definition of insanity? The bottom line is, none of these problems, and I could laundry list all the problems that we have and I could laundry list a bunch of promises to you. But at the end of the day, the experience that I have in this city with the Planning Commission, the pride and joy that I take in the years of service that I've had to our organizations, whether it was the AYSO or the Armenian National Committee or Boy Scouts of America, what have you, has made me very sensitive to the realities that we face and has given me the judgment and the connectivity to you as my neighbors, not as constituents, not as simple residents, but as my neighbors that I choose to serve. And by doing so, we will have the Glendale we deserve. My name is Leonard Menukian, number six, on March 3rd. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Brotman, your two-minute closing statement, please.
My name is Dan Brotman. I already mentioned that I'm an economics professor at Glendale College. What I didn't mention is that I had a career before this in economics and finance. First at the Federal Reserve, public sector, and then for 16 years at Cisco Systems as a finance director, private sector. I spent 18 years living in Asia, I've lived in many different cities. I've seen how many cities work. I'm the challenger in this race, looking to bring fresh ideas and critical thinking to the city. A couple of years ago, I learned that Glendale was planning to spend $500 million to rebuild the Grayson Gas Plant. I follow energy markets, so I knew that there were better alternatives, cleaner and cheaper. But no one in the city wanted to listen to what I had to say. So, I organized, formed the Glendale Environmental Coalition and eventually got the city to revise their plan. It's now mostly clean energy and it is actually $174 million cheaper than the original all-gas project, according to Glendale Water and Power. This was a wake-up call for me. It convinced me that we need people on our city council that understand what's happening in the wider world, that can set out a real vision and that are willing to challenge business's usual approaches to things. For my part, I envision a Glendale with a vibrant, walkable, transit-rich, artsy downtown, surrounded by beautiful neighborhoods that retain their historic charm and are not affected by mansionization and hillside development. It's a Glendale where the teachers, nurses, and police officers who live here, I'm sorry, who work here can actually afford to live here and where retirees aren't always in fear that the next rent increase is gonna put them out on the street. It's a Glendale rich in parks and tree canopy to keep the city cool and the air healthy and with city services you can count on because we never let development get ahead of our ability to support it. And it's a city with high-quality design standards that are consistently enforced regardless of who you know. I ask for your vote on March 3rd and together we can create a Glendale[1739.76] I ask for your vote on March 3rd, and together, we can create a Glendale that is second to none.
Thank you. Mr. Garpetian, your two-minute closing statement, please.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I want to thank the League for hosting this event as well. My name is Vartan Garpetian. On March 3rd, it will be my honor to receive one of your three votes. Glendale is a premier city. It's a great city. It's a safe city. That's why I got married in this city to my beautiful wife, I'm married in 1994. I'm raising my family with, many of the candidates who are sitting on, on this, on this, on this part of the, you know, the equation, if you will. Tonight, we discussed so many different issues, important issues that affects quality of life, but ladies and gentlemen, actions speak louder than words. I would like to share with some, some of the accomplishments that I had, some of the, my track record and the voting records. I voted for strengthening our public safety to keep Glendale the fourth safest city in California. Voted against marijuana legalization in Glendale. Voted against dispensaries that they wanted to put on Bramble Boulevard next to Americana. Voted for affordable housing projects, and it's work in progress. We built housing for veterans, for seniors, for young families. Voted for working, working towards workforce and entry-level ownership housing for, for our, our labor, labors to stay in Glendale and work in Glendale. Homelessness in Glendale has dropped by 6.5% because some, because of our proactive measures that we took. We put a moratorium in, in, in downtown for the first time, took the incentives out and included 15% inclusionary housing, and two and three bedrooms were implemented in every new project that's coming through. Continued to build and improve on our infrastructures. Voted for Grayson's power plant with more renewable energy, battery storage, therefore less pollution. Purchased first electric bus in Glendale. Participated in E-LAN 1, which will increase our renewable portfolio up to 47%. Started sustain, sustainability department in Glendale. Voted for term limits for the council members for the first time, three times, no more. Voted against salary increases for council members. Number, number eight on your ballot, Vartan Garpetian, but most importantly, participate in the elections. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we close this forum, we would like to take just a few minutes to remind voters of some big changes that have been made to the election process this year. As part of LA County's effort to modernize our voting processes, known as Voters, Voting Solutions for All People, or VSAP, voters will now have 11 days to vote at any vote center throughout the county with full language services and expanded accessibility. But be, please be sure to review your sample ballot before you go to the vote center. Voting by mail is still accessible and will be easier to use with over 150 drop-off, drop-offs available across the county. In addition, if you miss the February 18th registration deadline, you may still be able to vote at any vote center in LA County through conditional voter registration. For more information, just go to the glandelvotes.org or vsap.lavote.net websites. Thank you. This concludes our city council candidate forum. We're very grateful to Eliza Papazian, the Glendale Public Information Officer, and the state of, and the staff of the Glendale TV 6, Brian Halloran, Robert Townsend, Leona Abrahamian, and Davian Engel for their valuable support in making this event possible. We'd like to thank the candidates in participating in this forum. A vital part of our democratic process is the willingness of individuals to offer their services to represent our community, and we thank all of the candidates running in this election. The League of Women Voters of Glendale Burbank would also like to thank both our audience in attendance and those of you at home. If you plan to vote by mail, please be sure to drop off your ballot at a drop-off location so that it is received by March 3rd. Thank you, and good night.